Good morning, and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Ventura County. And at this time, if we would call us to order and have a rule call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
And Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And at this time, if we would stand for a moment of reflection, and if we would take a moment to, in silence, to lend our prayers and thoughts to those families who lost family members tragically in the disaster on the MetroLink last week. Supervisor Parks, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
There's a motion. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of the county and special districts of Tuesday, January 25th. Seem no objection to that motion? So ordered. Mr. CEO, could we have the agenda review?
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are a few minor adjustments. Items numbers 20, 21, and 22 have title corrections with revised letters. Item number 23 does not require a four-fifths vote, as was indicated, and we're requesting that item number 24 be pulled from the agenda, brought back at a later time.
Okay, did you get those recommended changes? I'd like to also ask that we pull item 10 off of consent, just for some opportunity for presentation discussion.
I'm sorry?
Item 10, yes. I'm sorry, question?
No, you said you repeated item 10, I missed it.
Oh, okay.
I followed better.
Okay. So, on, this is on, again, agenda review, and, what was that, item number five? Okay. Could I have an action on that for the revisions as recommended? Motion and a second.
Move to revise the agenda as proposed.
Motion and a second. Any objection to that or further? Saying none, so ordered. Okay, at this time, consent items 10 through 15, item seven with item 10, as I've asked to have it pulled just for discussion. Shall we do that first, since we have our clerk recorder and our election division chief here?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward, please? Mr. Schmidt?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Philip Schmidt, county clerk and recorder, and Jean Browning, Assistant Registrar of Voters. Be happy to try and clarify anything that you might want to know about item 10. The purpose of our board letter was to accept HAVA funds, which is the Help America Vote Act funds of approximately $1.9 million from the federal government, which was given to us through the State, Secretary of State's office, to, for the purpose of the punch-card buyout program. After the 2000 election in Florida, HAVA funds were made available to help counties get off of the punch-card system. Our punch-card system, the Data Vote, was not decertified. It was not the type of a system that had the problems that they had in Florida. But to give the perception of punch-cards throughout the nation, they recommended that everyone get off of the punch-card system. Ours works very well, but it is still being supported by the Data General mainframe system that we've had since the 1980s, and it's worked quite well for us, but our vendor is no longer going to support the Data General mainframe. So we do need to take some of this money and spend it on an upgrade to a PC-based system. And that is the purpose of today's board letter, is to give us the money to change to a PC-based system, so that we can move forward and evaluate all the different types of voting systems that are available and certified in California, to see which one we need to purchase to get off of our Data Vote punch-card system. So are there any questions?
Supervisor Parks?
I know there's a lot of concern about voters doing touchscreen, and we're not going to be looking at that, I would hope.
We are going to look at it. No matter what we do, we are going to have to have two systems in place. One for the absentee voting, because we can't very well send an electronic voting system out to each house for them to vote and send it back to us. You know, it would be nice if they would pay the postage. But we're going to have to have a paper-based system and an electronic voting system of some sort in place by January of 2006, to meet the HAVA requirements. Now, the reason that we have to have an electronic voting system available is for sight impaired people that go to the polls. We have to have some sort of a system in place, electronic, so that people who have sight problems can sit down and vote. We have to have the paper-based system for all of the absentee voters. So we're trying to evaluate what's the best thing, whether we go to an electronic voting system with a paper backup, or we go to a paper optical scan system and just one electronic system for every polling place, so.
So the requirement is then to meet a disability, essentially, a visually impaired voter, but it doesn't necessarily have to apply to the voting public?
That's correct.
In general?
Yes, and we're trying to evaluate what is the better system, which way is the best way to go. Electronic voting is slower, so we would have to have more machines in each polling place. The average time is anywhere from five to 10 minutes to vote on an electronic machine. To vote on a paper ballot, it's much quicker, but you have a lot more labor-intensive process with a paper ballot. You have the printing costs, you have the cost of the optical scan readers back, you know, they still have to be transported, or else have some sort of accounting system in every polling place. So, there's a lot of options. One of the reasons we haven't moved forward with it yet is because of the Department of Justice mandates that we had in the last election, and we have a meeting scheduled with them on the 9th of this month to reevaluate how we did, and it looks like the report's pretty good, but we're still up in the air about whether we do a bilingual ballot, because that is extremely expensive.
Okay, well, thank you. And, you know, the concern that I have is that you have, you open yourself up to potential for computer glitches, to being reliant on electricity, I mean, all those things that can go wrong over the course of, you know, a decade-plus that we would have the system. So I would just be concerned about the potential risk of having an election go awry.
Well, me too. And also, the fact that technology changes so fast. If we, you know, if we took this money that we have from the HAVA funds now and used it for our matching funds, we could purchase a system for approximately $10 million without any cost to the county. But my concern is, what's going to happen, and if we get through one more presidential election, is the technology still going to be there, and will the vendors be able to support the software, et cetera, for another one? Is it going to last us four years, six years, 10 years? You know, you look at what our Data Vote system has, how it has served us, you know, 20-some years, without a problem. And we check those punch-card, you know, those lever machines after every election and certify that they're okay. If you have a problem with a punch-card lever machine, all you have to do is replace a small lever machine. If you have a problem with a computer-based electronic voting system, you either have to get a technician in there to work on it, or replace the entire machine. They're a little more expensive than the lever machines, but unfortunately, because of the Florida fiasco, this is the way we have to go. So my concern is, how long is it going to last? You know, is it going to last us five years, 10 years, 15 years, or is it going to last us one election?
Thank you for those answers, and I could support, obviously, fulfilling the mandate of having something for visually impaired. I can't support going to a computer system for voting because of the potential for error or, and even if not error, computer glitches are, like I said, being dependent on electricities.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your concern about that, because it's some of the same concerns that we have.
Just make a comment. The machines that we have now, the lever machines, one or two people complained to me about them, and that, and these were people who had difficulty hearing, they couldn't hear the click, so they had a hard time putting it in the right place.
I hadn't heard that complaint before, but you can feel the click as it goes through. So maybe, you know, if they pull the card out, they can see that the hole is punched, too. Or maybe not. If they're sight impaired, they have that problem.
I think I'm talking about mainly older people.
Yes, and it won't go all the way through.
Older than I am.
And it won't go all the way through unless the card is seated all the way in. Most of the complaints that we've had where people said they couldn't get it to punch, it's because they didn't have the card pushed in all the way. It has a lockout system.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, I, you know, I think each and every one of us feels that the most important right and responsibility we have is to vote, but it, I have to agree with Supervisor Parks as far as, you know, the electronic voting, I don't think is ready, and it's too ripe for error, fraud, hackers, you know, all of those things. And, you know, to me, it's a case of, once again, because there was an issue, a highly publicized issue, but an issue in Florida, you know, there is this total knee-jerk reaction by our legislators to fix something that, quite frankly, wasn't all that broken. I mean, where else in the country? If it was rampant throughout the country, and every state had a problem, it would be different. But, you know, there's, the responsibility to vote is also to know how to vote and to take the time to make sure that you have done it correctly. And so, I just believe that we are going down a path that is so incredibly costly, could lead to fraud, and you know what? 10 years from now, some idiot in Washington is going to say, "This isn't working, let's go to a mechanical machine that we can," and we'll be right back where we started from. So, you know, I am not, now, nor have I ever been, at this point, with technology where it is, ready to say that we're not smart enough, as an American public, to figure out how to move a lever and punch a hole at a card.
Well, our next step is probably going to be to take a pencil and make a mark.
What about your technology?
Yes, I think that goes back to the days of charcoal or something, but...
No, when you're a candidate, all these things are worrisome.
Absolutely.
Including where your name is on the ballot and so forth. And as a former candidate, I would feel much more comfortable doing it the old-fashioned way, with a lever. way, with a lever.
Supervisor Bennett has a comment?
You're clearly committed that anything that we do electronically is going to have paper backup.
Absolutely.
Right, okay. Yeah, right, yeah, I appreciate that. And I just had one other question for you. If, as, if we move this way electronically, is there any possibility that the county can go to one of those systems where you have instant runoffs?
We haven't even looked into that yet. Instant runoffs are probably very expensive and also extremely hard to coordinate. I think San Francisco experimented with it during the last election, but I haven't seen any report back on how well it went and how they did it. You know, every time they make changes in the laws concerning elections, like changing the close date from a 15-day close to a seven-day close, or anything like that, it just puts a tremendous amount of pressure on the people that are coordinating the election as far as getting the timeliness in getting their material printed, getting it sent out. You know, we had problems with some of the absentee ballots going out prior to some of the sample ballots in one area, because the printer sent them to the wrong mailing center, and they sat for three days. It caused a couple complaints by a couple of the candidates, because some people had already voted before their sample ballot got there and before they saw the candidate statements. Well, it probably did not change the outcome of the election any, but it's extremely frustrating to a candidate who has paid money to have their candidate's statement sent out to the public, to the voters, and then the voters get their ballot before they get the candidate's statement. So it raises concerns like that, that anytime there's a change in the law, it just adds an awful lot more to the job that we do. And Mr. Browning has an excellent staff down there, but, you know, you just can't do it with 11 or 12 full-time people, and then add 1,500 part-timers right at the very end. You've got to do training. And with the absentee ballots, it's a much longer process, so it's pretty tough. But I'd like to alleviate some of your fears about hacking and manipulation. It would take a tremendous conspiracy, because these are standalone units. Someone could not just say, "Go onto the Internet and hack into our election system and change the outcome of the election," because our election system is a freestanding unit. Also, there's no outside access into the system that counts the ballots. Or, in the case of the electronic voting machines, it would have to be an inside job and a conspiracy among several people in order to have the machines set up so that if you voted, say, one way, it changed your vote to another, the way it counted. It's not like the old Chicago elections, where they just counted the ones that they wanted to count and threw the rest away. So it is a safe system. And I think there was a very stupid remark made by one systems president who said he was going to deliver a certain state to a certain candidate. That raised a lot of eyebrows and questions about whether or not they were secure, and they are really secure systems.
Well, I just, because that was my third-point question, I think that there are places in the world where people are doing electronic voting, and everything is out in the open. It is run by the government. Everybody has access to the source codes and all of that stuff, so everybody can check it. I don't think we should ever be comfortable here. We're doing, it's only in America do we say that you have proprietary rights to the, to the source code, to the, to how we handle the elections. And right now, the companies won't let you inspect, you know, all of their programming, because they say that's all proprietary, you know, programming that they've done. That's got to change before anybody's ever really going to have any confidence in the system, you know, that we have out there, so.
The state is doing that now.
All right, great.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
They put it in escrow, and they require the source code.
Great, thank you.
Could I ask two questions? One is, I'm not familiar with instant runoffs. If I can get maybe a brief description of what that is. And secondly, since we have a motion before us, could you explain what this will do, understanding the concerns expressed at the board?
Sure, I'll turn over the instant runoff to Gene.
Instant runoff, the way I understand it, is basically prioritizing each of the candidates, generally a one, two, three. And there's some intricacies with how that, how the, for example, the lowest-ranking candidate's votes get redistributed to the second-highest vote-getter. But basically, it sounds to me that you run the ballots, for example, and I'm not sure if you can, you can't do this necessarily with a Data Vote ballot, as far as I'm aware. You run the ballots the first time, and then go through a mathematical calculation to redistribute votes for the lowest vote-getter to the next vote-getter. If there's no clear winner in that runoff, then you run them again, redistributing the second-lowest vote-getters ballots to the individual voter's, you know, second or first or second-choice winner. And you run that until you do have a candidate who receives the, I think generally, the 50%, you know, the majority vote. But I'm not really an expert in that. It's a very, it's not so instant, in that there are several passes of the ballots, whatever mechanism you use, whatever vote totaling system you use in order to come up with a winner.
Supervisor Parks, if I could, the great advantage is, you just run one time. Okay? Yeah, I mean, and the people, and quite frankly, it's an advantage for challengers, because they're not trying to raise money twice and all that stuff going up against incumbents, et cetera. So I think it has some great advantages. But the, I mean, the short of it is, you know, they basically have, you know, they basically have a way to go through it and go, "Well, who's your first choice and who's your second choice?" And if you take people's second choices, so maybe somebody's at 38%, and somebody else is at 20, and somebody else is at 16, well, you take those people that have got the 16, the guy that got 16% or the woman that got 16%, find out who those people's second choices are, and if they kick, if they kick that person at 38% over 50, they're now the winner. So you only have one election, that's why it's called an instant runoff.
Well, it might be more expensive for the county, it'd be a lot less expensive for the candidates.
Well, and it might be less expensive in that the county only has to deal with it one time, so, you know.
They did this in San Francisco?
Yeah, my understanding, they did instant runoff in San Francisco, so.
Well, that would be interesting to study, though, if you're going to be able to use these funds to study voting systems. The second question then was how the staff, knowing that the board has these concerns about electronic voting, how the staff report meshes with that? The recommendation in the staff report is to...
The recommendation, basically, is to initially authorize the $700,000 portion, which we would intend to use 300,000 of, to migrate, basically, off of the Data General computer that we're using today to operate the Election Information Management System. But these funds, those particular funds do not put us in a position where we are actually purchasing a new voting system, because we're still on, we're still looking at the alternatives in that respect.
Because as I understand it, you're looking beyond helping the visually impaired and going to another system. And for that, I don't think I can support this, because at this point, I'm not interested in looking at going to another system of a particular electronic system as being proposed when it isn't required, other than for the visually impaired.
This board letter has nothing to do with that. It has only to do with getting off of the Data General mainframe and onto a PC-based system, so that we can then evaluate other systems that are not compatible with the Data General. The Data General system, Data General is no longer in business. And our current vendor with the EIMS or the Election Management System is no longer going to support working with a Data General mainframe. So it's only to get off of the Data General mainframe, onto a PC-based, not a PC election.
Okay, this is just how you tally the votes, not how the voters...
Correct, and how we work in the office.
All right, then I could support it, thank you.
Okay, further questions? Is that it?
Do you want to take the whole consent agenda?
Let's take the entire consent at this time.
Move the consent agenda as amended?
Motion of the second, any objection to the motion?
No objections, just a comment. I think you can see how interested elected officials are in the election process.
Seeing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, that was valuable, and I think good for the public to have heard the information also. At this time, we'll move to public comment. I have two cards submitted from the public. If there's anyone else wishing to speak, please submit a card. The first, welcome to the boardroom for a public speaking opportunity, Karen Thornton.
My name is Karen Thornton. I've lived in Ventura County for, and voted in Ventura County for 34 years. This statement is just for the record. With all the rain and damage from the last storms, do you want to, still want to take out the Matilah Dam? It's one area of Ventura County that didn't have problems. Liability: If the Matilah Dam is removed, loss of water, any lives lost, or flood damage caused after the fact will rest on the shoulders of the county. Because it is known the dam isn't going to come down, it is known the loss of, there will be a loss of water, well-recharging and storage. It is known there is going to be flooding, it is known the fish can't swim upstream, and it's known that the beaches are not going to receive the sand. Therefore, a choice made. The area most affected by the removal of the Matilah Dam has been the least studied. Water: Ojai Ground Management District and Casitas Water District concerns have not been addressed or fully addressed. Efforts by the Ojai Ground Management District to set up meetings were rejected, and phone calls were not returned. Ojai still feels the silt also retains water. The 2009 date is not when the dam was to be extinct or removed. The 2009 date is strictly when the contract with the Casitas Water District is up for reassessment. These dams, there are dams that have been in service for 90-plus years and are still serving their purpose. The reason that the water goes over the top of the Matilah Dam is because that's the way it was built, no floodgates. It has been the county's choice not to dredge the silt. The conclusions of the feasibility report by the Ventura County, was written by the Ventura Watershed District, not the Army Corps of Engineers. The conclusions do not state what was actually in certain areas of the report, and water issues were not discussed. The county is planning to use the Ventura County Integrated Water Management Plan to seek funds from Prop 50 bond for the 35% state share of the Matilah project. Prop 50 bond defines integrated regional water management projects to include any projects that protect against drought, protect or improve water quality, and improve water, local water security by reducing dependence on imported water, not to facilitate the removal of a dam, cause loss of water and storage, cause flooding, and cause the need to import water. Would your proposed use withstand an audit? $130 million and counting. We of Ventura County cannot afford the removal of the Matilah Dam, money or water-wise. The state doesn't have the money or the water, and the county and the feds don't have the money. Thank you. I've given a packet for each of you, and the areas that I didn't back up in the statement are backed up in what I passed you. And I know other people have also written you letters on the same topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I just, I just do want to appreciate the comments from the speaker, and do want to remind the board that a multi-year process did result in the county filing their EIR, and we had such great staff work with all of the various stakeholders, that the filing period for filing a lawsuit against the EIR expired, and nobody filed that. I think there's been very good cooperation between all of the agencies involved, in spite of the fact that it's a very sensitive issue that a lot of people are concerned about. That's remarkable, and I just want to remind the board of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Carol Dean Williams, 59-year resident of Ventura County. And I was going to bring a love poem this morning, and I didn't, and I got here and found that there's love in the air. Our auditor controller is on honeymoon. Winner honeymoon. I feel so bad. Auditor controller checks and balances should be bounced checks and unbalanced. I have a letter from our auditor controller, our elected auditor controller, dated January 27, 2005. Asset 78165, $3,132 was stolen, and a sheriff deputy was prosecuted. This is property within the possession and control of the sheriff's department, and I have not read of any break-ins to steal the following property. JV Edinine video cassette, $7,511. According to the sheriff's department, this asset was stolen. No prosecution. A sheriff deputy stole that, or sheriff employees stole that. Asset 074396, $6,665. Project data video Zoom, $5,763. According to the sheriff's department, these assets were stolen. Stolen, no arrests, no prosecution. Again, there were no break-ins. This is property within the control and possession of the sheriff. Assets of Net Fact machines, $25,900. They believe they're obsolete, but they can't account for them. I tallied up hundreds of thousands of dollars that our elected auditor has not responded to me, that comes under stolen property by the sheriff. And I talked with Ms. McDonald this morning. The sheriff's historical cost of the assets, from 2002 to 2003, was $129 million. For 2003, 2004, it's $145 million, and Ms. McDonald cannot give me a clear explanation of that huge increase. And also, all the sheriff's vehicles are listed under the fleet maintenance. And I tried to get an answer, does the sheriff pay for those vehicles? It has the sheriff's name on them. And then I asked, why is the Honor Farm buildings and other buildings listed in the sheriff's inventory when that is county property and not sheriff property and can't be stolen? Is it to inflate his budget so he can keep crying, crying for more money? That he lets county property get stolen by his sheriff deputies? Here's the sheriff's citizen's complaint form mandated by law. He has threatened me not to file any more of these. That lying, corrupt Sheriff Brooks. He says here, with his own signature on it, that every complaint, regardless of its nature, investigated, that lying, corrupt, elected Sheriff Brooks. investigated, that lying, corrupt, elected Sheriff Brooks. Take him to trial. Put him on the witness stand under oath because he's already lied under oath in your lawsuit. I have the direct evidence. Put him under oath and show him who he is to the voters of Ventura County. They'll run him out on the rails and tar and feather that lying, corrupt.
Would you sum up, Mr. Williams? Your time's almost up.
Almost, okay. Tar and feather him and run him out of town. That lying, corrupt, elected Sheriff Brooks. Darn, is that light ever going to turn red?
It's three, two, one. There you go, sir. That concludes the public comment period this time.
Can I say one last thing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you have five minutes reallocated. And we, we have your written comments and appreciate that supplemental, thank you. All right, at this time, we will go to board comments, and I'm not going to be able to keep track of left and right here. Supervisor Michaels? You're up.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no comments today other than to ask that the board adjourn in memory of the citizens on this list. Four of the names were lost in the MetroLink tragedy last week. And one name that I will call out is Navy Corpsman John Daniel House, who was killed in a helicopter accident. He was 28-years-old and serving in Iraq, and it was a pretty sad instance for everyone, and he definitely will be missed, and we thank him for his service to his country.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I think rarely would I ever say that I'm glad that we don't have any rain forecast for a while, but in the Ojai Valley, we really need it. We have, over 100 homes have been flooded out, and we're still scrambling like crazy to try to help all of those people. And I think a few weeks of dry weather is certainly going to be, be good for everybody, everybody up there. I want to continue to thank staff and, and all the volunteers in the Ojai Valley that have been stepping forward. There was a fundraiser the last Saturday. Hundreds of people came in, in the community of the Ojai Valley to try to raise money for that. And it's, it is one of the remarkable things about Ventura County and particularly the Ojai Valley, there's a strong sense of community, and people do take care of each other, and so from that standpoint, that, that's, that's the silver lining of, of a tough three weeks or so that we've had. The, and then I would like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I don't have any comments, but I'd like to, for the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'll get to that.
Thank you. Supervisor Park.
I would just like to comment, I know it's shocking to hear someone come up to the podium and call our sheriff corrupt and lying and all, and it's, it's part of the freedom of speech in our nation, and I just, you, you feel like you have to say, you know, obviously our sheriff is not corrupt, and he does the best he can with what he can get from the board of supervisors, and I just, I have to just say that, you know, the whole board is, you know, obviously not of that opinion, and it is just something that we have to do for freedom of speech, but it is pretty uncalled for. Also, I would like to mention that, I know at Christmas time, I sent a, a nice little card with a mountain lion cub on it. The Santa Monica Mountains area has, had four adult mountain lions, P1, P2, P3, P4, and then I think P1 and P2 got together and had four mountain lion cubs, which was nice. Yes. But what I wanted to say today was that both P3 and P4 have died, they were, they died as a result of eating apparently a coyote who had eaten a rodent who had been poisoned by anticoagulant pesticides. And I think the male was only one-year-old, the adult male, and the adult female was, I think, a little older. But it just really brings home what happens when, you know, people use a certain type of pesticide that, you know, basically causes internal bleeding, and how that affects going up the food chain. I know we've, here we've lost two of the four known mountain lions that we had in the Santa Monica Mountains. I think we've lost condors also as a result of this, so seeing what, I'd like to look at everything that we can do to encourage individuals, residences, residents not to use this type of anticoagulant pesticide. And then also see what we can do as far as a government entity to see that we can not use that. And then finally, I would just ask that the board close in memory of the people on this list that I'm submitting.
Thank you. I'd just like to let the board know I'll be going up to Sacramento on Thursday for CSAC Board of Directors meeting, and, and one of the big items on the agenda is to work on a, what will be a, some draft principles related to the whole pension reform issue. Assembly member Keith Richmond will be speaking to the Board of Directors, as will representative from the State Association of Firefighters. So the item is heating up, and I'll give you a report back next week. And I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of Santa Paula resident, Everett John Lowry, and certainly will be missed by the community. And thank you. This time, we'll move to item 17, CEO report on the Tobacco Settlement Program Annual Plan Update for 2004-05. Ms. Camacho, welcome.
Thank you. Norma Camacho with the County Executive Office, and I'm here today to recommend the adoption of the fiscal year 04-05 Tobacco Settlement Program Annual Plan Update. And again, this annual plan update is a compilation of all the work that the committee, the committees, both the Evaluation Allocation Oversight Committee and the Finance Oversight Committee has conducted over the last fiscal year in developing the 04-05 recommended allocations. And as we all recall, it was a very, very challenging budget year this last year, and there was a desire for all members, from all members of the committee to create a soft landing for many of the programs that were allocated funding last year. And, and to that result, although there was a projection of 8.38 million of master settlement agreement funds available this year, 9 million was allocated by your board supervisor. Now, the finance committee in this recommendation has recommended that the allocation for fiscal year 05-06, consider only the projected current year revenue streams of 8.4 million. And although they were in concurrence with creating a soft landing, they are recommending that for 05-06, we try to adhere to living within our means, and I believe the CEO's office very much concurs with that recommendation as well. What this would mean for fiscal year 05-06, that there is 8.4 million in anticipated projected tobacco settlement revenues, which would equate to approximately a $680,000 reduction in available funding for programs that are being funded this year. And so, at this point, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have regarding the process, the annual plan update, and also take back any type of comments or guidance you may have for the committee members as we begin the fiscal year 05-06 process this year.
Questions? Supervisor Bennett.
I just, you, you asked for, for suggestions, and I suppose it's not a question. But as, as we go forward into the next year, I think you make the case very well in the staff report, that tobacco funding is not steady, tobacco funding is declining, and we have to be cautious, I think, all along. Our consistent policy since Johnny Johnson, our CEO, has come on board is to try to get us into sustainable mode. So is it the CEO's office, going to be your recommendation to the committee, that we, we actually will have less to expend next year because, because of these declining funds?
Yeah, at this point, the funds, well, actually, the funds have increased from last year to this year, but what we had done for this particular budget year is to supplement our anticipated revenues for this year with interest income, as well as unexpended funds from the prior year to create that soft landing. And so, but that's not something that we can sustain year after year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, do you have comments?
In answer to Supervisor Bennett, when I look at the, the way the process has worked in the past at least, has been that the committees made their recommendation, and then I make a recommendation to you based on what I see financially, and I concur with the Financial Oversight Group. This, I guess the big question is, is when is a soft landing really a ruse for a structural deficit? And that is, you're continuing to fund out of your reserves. It doesn't necessarily mean that a soft landing has to occur, you know, on a dime. Mixing my metaphors here. It doesn't have, necessarily happen immediately, but there has to be a clear plan that shows that we're actually coming down to sustainability as opposed to just putting off and hoping for the best, which has not happened in California in recent time.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, just one quick comment this, on my favorite subject. You know, in the very beginning, we talked about that if, in fact, the, the social movement in the United States is successful, there will be no more smokers, or at least to the extent that there's the kind of, of revenue that can be expected here. So it's kind of a, a self-killing situation where, you know, as you do tobacco prevention and cessation with this money, and that, and that is successful, there's less and less and less revenue. And my fear all along has been the, the grand visions that some of these committees have had, and they are grand visions, we all, you know, wish we could do this. But my fear has been that, that programs would be built that then would end up with the county sustaining them. And so I'm very pleased to see this, I will call it a successful attempt, at the very least it is an attempt, to, to bring reality to the picture on this tobacco settlement funding. The other thing that, that again, I will say, and I haven't said it for a couple of years, so I'm not terribly redundant here, and that is that this money is basically, was a replacement for expenditures that happened because, expenditures of public funds in healthcare systems because of the effects of smoking. And while if there's enough money, it's a great thing to do a lot of new and innovative programs, we also have a safety net here that is far more valuable than any one given cessation program in the amount of public health services that come to the citizens of this county. So, you know, I, I, this is nothing new to anybody, you've all heard me say it, I believe that the, the lion's share of these funds need to support the very fine health safety net that we have in this county. And if and when there's other funds left, or there's funds that can be used for other programs, that we do so very, very carefully. It appears from this report that we are, and that things are coming back into more of a real mode. But I just, you know, want to caution that I'm not going to be supportive of new programs or long-term ongoing programs with this funding, because there is no telling when it will get to the point that it is either not there, or there isn't enough to sustain, and we cannot, out of the County General Fund, sustain any more programs.
Further comments?
With the idea that we can't bring in new programs, really, I just, since you're asking us on our input, I would just say that I think it's really important that we do what we can to expand the number of in-home health services that we can provide primarily to the elderly, because we have an incredibly fast-growing segment of that population coming before us. And as a result of that, there are little options available in terms of convalescent homes or hospital that are available for someone who has a chronic, long-term disease and would like to stay home. So I think whatever we can do, and, and some of it is just because it pays so little to get people to go to those homes and help provide that service, I think we need to do what we can to accommodate that, because in the long run, it is a lot less costly than having to go to a convalescent home or whatever, if you can stay at home and get services there. So that, that's where I would see a, a big priority.
Okay, the actions before the board? Some motion and a second, objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you for your good work. Norma. All right, we'll move on to item 18, authorized submission of applications for SB 821 pedestrian bicycle funds. Good morning, Mr. Britt.
Good morning, board members. Mr. Johnson. With your board's indulgence, my comments will apply to both item 18 and 19, which are very similar. Want to emphasize that both, in both items, you're only authorizing staff to submit applications for projects for grants. We're not approving the grants, not approving the projects, we're only submitting the applications, and we need your authority to submit the applications. Approval in both project, cases, in the case of Safe Route to School, projects will be by the state, and in the case of the SB 821 bicycle pedestrian would be by the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Very similar criteria for both projects, but slightly different, for both programs, but slightly different. The recommended priorities in both cases are by your staff, based on previous guidance or comments made by your board, but your board may also modify the priorities that we've recommended to you today at your discretion, or advise to add projects should you care to. We did receive input from, after the board letter was prepared, by, from some supervisor's office, from Supervisor Bennett's office, request to combine priorities one and two, which are the same on both lists, into one project. And our response is, yes, that can be done very easily, relatively easily, and that both projects are in the same geographic area and in similar, or, and are similar in scope type of projects. We also received a request from the Harbor Department and Supervisor Flynn's office to add a project to the SB 821, or item 18, bicycle pedestrian plan for pedestrian bicycle walkways on Victoria Avenue at Harbor. Yes, that can be added, but we would need guidance in both cases from your board as to priority. We were also requested to provide a history of prior Safe Route to School projects. We have submitted in the past four years, two projects, and they have been approved, but we did have to submit them multiple times. The first project was a pedestrian sidewalks improvement at Pyro School in the community of Pyro, and in that case, the match was by the redevelopment agency. And the second was Rio de Valle Community Center in El Rio on Rose Avenue, and in that case, the match was by a concurrent-approved SB 821 project. We got the state match to match the federal funds. With that, I would answer any questions. I realize you're on item 18, so, but I'd be willing to answer any questions on both, both items, should your board have any.
Thank you, Mr. Britt. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, on item 18, the priority item for District 4 feasibility study for Santa Susana Pass Road Bike Lanes, where did that come from?
That came from, from us and talking to residents and also out in that area. The shoulders are relatively narrow, bicyclists have a problem with traveling on those shoulders, there's no room for pedestrians, and additional shoulders does, it does have the secondary benefit of providing additional recovery room for motorists also. But the, the program, since it provides, is for bicyclists, we put that in as a, to try and take advantage of it.
Okay, well, it's not my priority, but we'll talk later.
Be glad to add anything.
Well, one of the things that I think is important is, you know, Santa Susana School, an old school, pedestrian facilities are extremely lacking around there, and with all of the building that has gone on, has nothing to do with the project this board heard, but previous to that, there's some real concern around the school, and I, I... And I, I, let me put it this way, I know my office intended to forward that information. I cannot guarantee that it found its way to you, because it's not on here, so I'm not, I'm not pointing anything out, I'm merely saying that that is of a concern. And so that's why I was surprised that this bike lane thing was on there. I thought we had changed it. But I'm a little shorthanded, so I will take full responsibility for anything other than now. I'd like to perhaps talk to you about editing that out and changing it.
Project can be added, a project can be taken off, you know, we're, and it could have been our error in misinterpreting what your staff told us, too. So if that was the case, I'd apologize.
Hey, that happens. I just, you know, I thought, before I said anything, I wanted to know exactly where it came from, and your logic is very, is correct on Santa Susana Road for the pedestrian and bicycle, but I'm a little more concerned about the school right now. So we'll work, we'll work that out unless it absolutely has to be done here at this meeting. I'm not under the understanding that we're working on the list, we're only working on the grant application.
Right. And also, just to emphasize, that these particular grant programs are annual programs, unlike the multi-year federal grant, which will be coming to your board in a few weeks, which is for four years. You have a project to review this list and perhaps modify it on an annual basis, so there's, I know a year sounds like a long time, but it really comes around pretty quickly. And so I'd suggest that we can certainly add it, and frankly, only the top one or two projects on each list are really going to make it to the top in any one year.
Having the impact there.
Because there's limited funding available for these projects, for these programs.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I, I, Mr. Britt mentioned that my office talked about combining projects one and two. His, yet his letter asked for us to only submit one project, but because we were able to find Highway 33 funds and stuff, I just want to confirm with Mr. Britt that the way we described it to you, although you came up with this idea of combining them, bottom line is, we can do this and not, and have it be, stay within the budget that you're referring to here, correct?
It can be done, it can stay within what we anticipate the funds will be done, but when it gets in for, that doesn't guarantee that we'll get approved.
Sure.
I think we can put together.
But I would offer, it's always challenging for the board when you have five supervisors, and we all have projects, and we can only move one, one grant application at this point in time. So I have, I certainly have a tendency to respect staff's recommendation that you hope is using some kind of objective criteria. Happens to be that it's this, you know, it's in my district for, at this point in time. But the advantage of combining the two and us taking some of our local District One Highway 33 funds and doing that is that we would knock out one and two, and it would move everybody's projects up on the priority list, so that your projects from the other districts would get handled sooner. So that will be what I'll recommend as my, as the recommended action. But I certainly want to respect hearing from the other supervisors before I make the motion.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, on item 18 and then 19 also, there's an item on design of sidewalk to Victoria Avenue South, Channel Islands Boulevard to Island View, potentially a joint project with the city of Oxnard. Now, in, in, in both of these items, could the sidewalk serve two purposes? One, pedestrian traffic, walking traffic, so to speak, and bicycle traffic. Is there a way to combine them?
You can combine them. It's generally not recommended, but it can be done. You have examples right outside the government center on Victoria Avenue by the city of Ventura, where there are sidewalk combined with, you do it by striping. It's better to have them a little bit physical separation, but it can be done.
It's dangerous.
There's a certain amount of conflict between the bicyclists and the pedestrians, and then you've got motorists on the other side.
Okay, on Butch, first of all, it's a hard issue, because there's not very much money. It looks like we're looking at a big pot of gold, but we're not, are we, Butch?
No, sir.
If we, if Channel Islands Bicycle Path, which was approved in 1986, and is in the Public Works Plan and approved by the Coastal Commission, if that could be added for next year's list, not bumping anything around on this year's list, I would appreciate it. It might be added with, with the sidewalk on Victoria Avenue, and if that seems not a good idea. But if it meets the criteria for getting on this list, I would hope that we could have it on for next year.
We can certainly look at that, sir.
Okay. Want to go ahead and make them?
Yes, I would like to ask you about item 19. The one item from my district regarding two-speed monitoring signs on Santa Rosa Road. This is for that Safe Routes to School grant, and I just wanted to specify that those monitoring signs would be next to the bus stops, school bus stops. And the reason why it's so necessary is because nobody stops for blinking red lights on a school bus on Santa Rosa Road. And if you're a resident trying to do that, you risk being rear-ended. So, I mean, it's, I think this will just be another method of trying to let people realize that they are exceeding speed limits over where the bus stops. And also, I note that of the existing match, this is a very small project, $3,000 match, as opposed to some of the others. But the question that I have is, you mentioned that only the top two are going to get more, are likely to get funded. Do you mean top two in our priority?
Yes, ma'am. Top one or two in the priority list. I mean, there's very limited funding available for this program. We'll submit them, but we have to have a priority list. The state or VCTC won't just take them and assign priorities to them themselves. We have to assign a priority to them. And frankly, there's only enough money available that generally the top one or the top two projects are going to get approved in any one year. That's not to say that they won't move up, assuming the other projects get approved in subsequent years. And you will also have an opportunity to change the list, change the priorities in subsequent years, depending on circumstances.
And I was just looking at the process. They're, they're going to look at the top two, even though you submit, you know, nine or so on this particular item, is that correct? And then the fact that one's 3,000, one is 30,000, one's 500,000, isn't going to play as much a role as just what our priorities are?
They're going to look at the funding available, and trying to equitably spread it, spread it among the various applicants they get. You know, how they actually choose the projects that they will fund that particular year, in some cases, I honestly don't know. They tend to go with the top priorities and try to spread the funding around on some type of equitable basis, and try to get the most bang for their buck.
There.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question? Excuse me. The 10 cities submit plans or projects also.
On the state route to school program, actually, every entity in the state can submit projects. On the SB 821, which is a local selection by Ventura County Transportation Commission, the 10 cities plus the county, and in some cases, other entities may also submit a project, but in general, it's the cities and the county.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, what's pleasure?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make the motion that we submit that as our, as our top, top priority, the combination of items one and two in item 18 and 19. With County Council's permission, we can do two agenda items at once, is that correct? Right. So for agenda items 18 and 19, that we combine one and two, and submit that as our top priority project.
There's a motion?
Second.
Further discussion? Objection to the motion? Okay, seeing none, that is a motion of second on both 18 and 19 to submit the priorities of one and two combined.
And that one change regarding the Santa Rosa speed monitoring signs would be at the bus, school bus stops? We can get that specified in the grant application.
Seeing no objection, so ordered. Then we're on to item 20, which is our report of use of emergency contract authority by our Director of Public Works. Mr. Coons, good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. If it's the board's pleasure, they could hear all items 20, 21, 22, 23, if it's your pleasure, and then I could ask for questions on all of them at the same time.
Why don't you do that?
Madam Chair, those are different entities, so I would prefer if they were heard separately.
Oh, yeah, because they're watershed protection and...
That's correct.
Yeah, public works, okay.
So, all right.
When the, in cases of emergency, the board's directed the Director of Public Works to take immediate action and to elect the work out without going through the competitive bidding process. We have, in Public Works, have done that in all of our emergency storm situations with the roads, and we'll just take them in order. I provided you a listing, a supplemental report today, that shows the contracts that have been let, and the purchase orders that have been let, to do those road improvements. There will be further reports back to your board in next week, in the following weeks, as long as we have emergency contracts, to give you a status report on those contracts. At any time, the board feels that, the board's decisions that they are not an emergency, different than my opinion, the board can direct me to go out to bid on those projects, and Public Works would do that following the board's direction. These cases here for the roads, we need to get emergency vehicles in, fire, ambulance, police, sheriff, and residents need that access brought back for them as soon as possible. So we have proceeded as quickly as possible with all of our staff out at these locations, and have gotten the contractors that have been bidding in this county on work. That's been the history of bids we've received, so we know the contractors, we know their abilities, we know what equipment they have, and what type of projects they bid on, so we have matched up the appropriate contractors with the work to be done. In the supplemental handout, we have given you a timeframe on what we anticipate these emergency works will be completed, and also the dollar amounts that we have originally estimated. We do anticipate that some of those contracts will, with more work being identified as we go on, may go higher in costs. And there are additional contracts that are let that aren't on this list, but they, this is the compliance with the code sections that we're bringing these before you. The other ones that were let yesterday and the day before, they'll be brought back before you next week. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond and, or provide you any additional information that you may request.
Questions?
Move item 20.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Flynn?
Well, I'll second the motion, and I'll speak to it.
Okay, motion and second on item 20?
You know that safety is involved with watershed protection, roads and so forth, is a safety issue. I don't think I've seen in, at least in the time I've been on the board, so many slides in the county. Almost, especially in the Ojai Valley, especially in Santa Paula, and other places, and I'm beginning, it is a safety issue. And I think in some cases, we're up against the wall, because there's not enough money to do what needs to be done. Debris basins need to be built. Most people never see a debris basin. They don't know what debris basins do. And they're kind of hidden from the public, so the public really does not know where this money is being spent. But a debris basin is very important. I think there are areas around the county that if we had enough money, we would build debris basins. So what I would like to propose that you do is give a presentation on the funding sources for watershed protection, and how much money are we taking in? How much revenues are we taking in each year as compared to the number of safety issues that we have? And I would think this board needs to discuss sometime soon, some additional revenue funding mechanisms.
I'd be glad to do that. I don't believe that there's been any time since the 50s that that's been brought back to your board, and I agree, that's a very high priority on doing that, and prioritizing the projects, and identifying the funding sources to match that. So I'll be glad to report back to your board with that.
Madam Chair? Just, just real quickly, we have an airplane, as you all know, and we have been flying the county on a regular basis over the weekends, kind of keeping track. And I don't think anybody realizes the damage until you get at 1,000 feet flying over the county, and you see, you know, we think about La Conchita, and we think about, you know, Ojai Valley and the homes that are lost, but if you look at the roads, the back roads, the oil company roads, any road, farm roads, whatever, you know, and orchards that are now out in the middle of the Santa Clara River, the amount of damage is absolutely incredible. And, you know, I don't know what we can do in this wonderful state of ours. Mother Nature tends to PMS on a regular basis, and so, you know, I think we have to learn to live with that. But I do believe that there ought to be a discussion, I do agree with Supervisor Flynn, there ought to be a discussion of where our funding comes from, and what's our 10, 12, 20-year plan for this county to do what we can do, realizing we can't ever say that there's not going to be another disaster in this county. That's just the nature of, particular of our geography. But when you, when you see from above what it looks like, and you realize the amount of damage, I don't know that we would ever be able to clean up some of the damage that's out there, and it just may have to be left, much like the mudslide in La Conchita, because you start trying to clean it up, and it gets worse. But I agree, we have not had, at least since I've been on this board, a comprehensive workshop on the issues of flood control, and erosion control, and those kinds of things. So somewhere down the line, when everybody has time, which is not right now while we're dealing with emergencies, that might be a good thing for the board to, to get up to speed on.
Okay. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Three quick points that I wanted to make, and germane to these comments, but I think this emergency has really awakened many of us, including myself, up to this disconnect between the needs that we have out there, and the revenue limits that the taxpayers have essentially, you know, decided to impose upon us. The more we can make it clear how that all happens, certainly the taxpayers want to know that we're spending their money efficiently. But at some point in time, we have to say, look, this is, this is, these are all the needs, these are all the things that could be handled, and with, without the revenue, they just, they just will be waiting for the next disaster if they, if they didn't slide this time. The second thing is, I, as a result of all of this, I think it became very clear that the public is still confused, and quite frankly, many city officials, county officials, elected officials, et cetera, are confused about where we should send the public, and where we should all turn to get accurate information about road closures, about all of that kind of stuff. And that's a long-term, so the two long-term things to work on. And one is this idea of what's, what's our revenue sources for, for these obscure things? Nobody thinks about, well, I wonder if the Watershed Protection District has enough money? I mean, I never have, I've never had the public come up to me and, and raise that question, right? And it's, and then only during the emergency does everybody say, hey, what, you know, how do we handle this? I think that both of those areas are areas that we need to do education in, and perhaps clean up in terms of what is our procedure in terms of emergency contacts. And that's not germane to Public Works, that's for us overall. The final thing I'd just like to point out is that we had rain predicted last week, and I think that made all of us hustle, because we didn't know for sure how much rain was going to come. And I really want to compliment... And I really want to compliment many of the people in the Public Works Department, Mr. Coons, that just really came forward. And I know that your department was hustling like crazy. And the road crews under Butch Britt were, you know, they let the contract for Santa Ana Road as quickly as they could. You've got that contractor, if you ever go by, you want to see something hairy, watch the contractor who's all the way up at the top, trying to take a slide down from the top, precariously balanced up there. But that contract was let. I know I talked to Mr. Britt, he says on an emergency, he's going to do it the very next day. When I talked to him, they got out and cleaning roads up like crazy so the stuff didn't wash right back down into the culverts, watershed protection, cleaning up the tremendous work in Casitas Vista, getting permission from the property owner, I mean, Casita Springs, getting permission from the property owner to open a channel up. And we found a channel about 24 hours before the storm was predicted to hit that was for Highway 33 that Caltrans was supposed to have thought had cleared out and had a one-inch clearance for a six-inch culvert. It only had one inch left. I mean, a small storm would have done that. But watershed protection, working with Caltrans, was able to get that channel opened up, and then watershed protection moved up into the property. So just a tremendous amount of good work and hustle. And I know your staff is burning the midnight oil because when I call at 8:00 at night, they're still there, and they're calling me back and sending emails, and so I know they're working very long hours. And I just want to pass on from the people that are benefiting from this, the appreciation of a lot of constituents out there. And I'm getting a lot of constituents that are expressing tremendous gratitude, and I wanted to pass that on to people in the Public Works Department in particular that have been doing that. So thank you very much.
I'll make sure all of them hear that. I guess our theme this year was 24/7, and I guess it matches up pretty good.
Truly was, yeah. Supervisor Park?
The contractors that we're using also, I want to compliment all the contractors we're using. We're very pleased with the work, and we do prepare in the times before the winter season gets here. We have all of our channels cleaned out and do all the work in preparation every year. But we're scrambling right now.
If I could just, one second, before we go to Supervisor, just tell a quick story. I was out working, I won't identify the place. By the way, I was at Siederoblis, and people were working to clear up the channel underneath the road, under a county road. And somebody got the impression that this was a private contractor that the county had contracted with, for whatever reason, because the truck wasn't there that said County Ventura. And one resident turned to the other and said, see how hard they're working? That's because they're not county employees, they're private contractors, right? Well, then, five minutes later, the county truck pulled up, and it was obvious these were county employees. And the resident, to his credit, said, you know, I take that back, those guys are working hard. And so there is this myth, you know, that county workers and government workers are never pulling their weight. Guys were really hustling and scrambling, and they were, you know, going above and beyond to try to get that channel open. So my compliments.
Supervisor Park?
I just wanted to say that I had talked with Deputy Director of the Watershed Protection District, Jeff Pratt, about having some kind of workshop, just like we did with the Fire Department, I think, last year, to kind of show us the different projects that are going on throughout the county. So maybe we can tie that in with also looking at the funding sources and how we're doing that. I would also be interested in knowing how the funds are allocated. And I know, you know, some people, you know, we do have a tax that helps pay for it, but just, for example, the concept of, you know, over a million dollars extra having to go to a lawsuit in one district, and the funds for that lawsuit would come out of the flood control of that district instead of the countywide, is something that I'm interested in learning more about. And then also, I would imagine we have a public facilities element to our general plan. I don't know how up-to-date that is, but we might want to look at using the examples of this, of our reaction during the storms and the impacts and how we dealt with them as a learning basis for updating our public facilities element.
Supervisor Flynn? No? Other comments?
One last comment, you complimented Public Works. The Fire Chief has offered his services, and I do want to compliment the Fire Chief, too. He's been great on teamwork with us and loaning us men and equipment. And one comment you made on road closures, every day we have updated our website, Public Works with the Ventura County website, and it has all the road closure informations up-to-date every day.
Been doing an excellent job. Supervisor Michaels, was there a motion?
Yeah, you had a motion in a second.
Oh, that's right. Motion and second on 20. Any further discussion, any objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Item 21, under the Watershed Protection District.
Move the recommended action.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Item 22, Watershed Protection District.
Move the recommended action.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Objection, seeing none, so ordered. Item 23, Watershed Protection District.
Move approval.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chair?
This is a receiving file.
I believe on item 22, you mentioned Watershed Protection District, and that's Waterworks District Number...
That's District One. Waterworks District One.
Oh, I'm sorry, Waterworks District One, that was 22. Thank you. All right, 23. See, trying to go so fast here.
And this is Waterworks District 19, move approval.
Waterworks District 19.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, no objection, seeing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all your good work. Please tell all your teams. Mr. Johnston?
In the, with all the thank yous going out, the Waterworks crowd and Ready Pecologist left, who has also been yeoman work. Thank you, Ready. And it's a time to contemplate, too, you know, the definition of public safety at times like these. And we just, the people who are working seven days a week, you know, 24 hours a day in inclement weather and under hazardous conditions, to make it possible. For those who live in the Ojai Valley, where some of us do, like me, and recognize what it takes, when there's only one way out of that valley now, and the cooperation between Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, Public Works, you know, roads, flood control, it's our, pardon me, watershed protection. I'll probably not live long enough to reprogram my brain for watershed protection. But all of that, you know, comes together, you know, to make the community safer, and then when the immediate hazard or danger has passed, then the citizens turn their sights...
Their thoughts elsewhere.
Yeah, their thoughts elsewhere on how long it takes them to get someplace. And there's a coordination between getting people through safely and preserving, you know, Public Works assets. Had the Highway Patrol and the Caltrans not done what they did, which they were roundly criticized for up there on Highway 33, but they came in in the middle of the night and started making decisions to be sure that road didn't collapse, had it gone out, you know, we would have had the Berlin airlift trying to get supplies to the Ojai. So I want to thank all the Public Works folks. And it's now in their hands. During the emergency, it's the Fire Chief on the station, now it'll be Mr. Coons, so thanks.
Yes, thank you. Good comments, thank you. Item 24 has been pulled. Looks like it's proposed to be brought back on the 8th of February. Item 25...
Move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file? Second?
Second.
There is a second? Seeing no objection to that, so ordered. This is probably the fastest agenda.
Since Bennett was in charge.
Since Bennett was in charge, that's right. All right, we will, we actually have a few minutes, and we'll go into closed session for our 10:00 AM closed session. Will there be any announcements out of closed session, Mr. County Council?
I do not expect any announcements.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to closed session.